...of the planning board for October 8th, and we have one item on the agenda that I will read in. It is the revised zoning ordinance, which will consist of the review of proposed zoning ordinance, zoning map and associated ordinance changes. For the zoning ordinance dated October 8th, 2009, the zoning map dated October 8th, 2009, and amendments to the city ordinances, which include Chapter 11, Article 6, Comprehensive Plan Information, and Chapter 11, Article 8, Site Plan Review. Having read that in, I will now turn it over to Rick Tainter.
Thank you. And I think what I'd like to do to begin with, just to point what you have in front of you or if you've received, we have the memorandum that went out with the zoning ordinance discussing some of the major changes that you hadn't had the chance to review the specific wording for, and I'd like to go over that wording in a bit. It's kind of the first order of business. But the other items that are before you are the two proposed non-zoning ordinances that are referred to in the third bullet, the one about referrals to the planning board and one about the site plan review, the ordinance that authorizes site plan review. And then the third item that was also in front of you is a memo from me dated today about next steps in land use regulations. And I think at the end of our discussion about the zoning ordinance and zoning map, we should update that list, but this is a list that can be updated. So as we go through the ordinance tonight, if something occurs to you that you think is important to address, and we don't want to do it right now as part of an on-the-fly change to the zoning ordinance, we could just add it to this list, and it will be added for further consideration. So let's go ahead.
And that will be an ongoing list, Rick, that we'll have?
Yes, yes. But I just wanted to list the ones that I thought were the most important things to move forward with right after we adopt this ordinance. So turning to the October 6th, first of all, does anybody have any questions about that before I jump into this? Then turning to the October 6th memo, I do want to go through all of these items, and I know there will be some other items that you have questions about, and Tony has already brought up one to me today. But if we go through these major items, then we can cycle back and go through the others. So just page by page, the first set of changes that are significant changes from what you've seen already are in Pages 6 and 7 of the ordinance. And at one of the public hearings, Attorney Griffin recommended or noted that the zoning ordinance included the specific criteria for special exceptions but didn't include specific criteria for variances. It just referred to the criteria required by state law, by state statute. And so what we've done is we've incorporated the statutory criteria here. One thing that's important to note is that the statutory criteria have been voted, the legislature has voted a change in these criteria. That change becomes effective January 1st. And so because of that, I think what we would suggest is to avoid all confusion that we recommend to the council that the ordinance be adopted with an effective date of January 1st, rather than if the council were to vote on December, sometime in December, not have that be the effective date, but have January 1st be the effective date. So there's no question as to what the statutory criteria are or whether we have any conflict with the statutory criteria. And then, yes, go ahead.
What happens in that time period between first reading and the 1st of January?
Well, between the first reading, between the notice and the second reading, which is essentially the first reading, whenever that happens, that overlap period, any development application that comes in has to comply with both ordinances.
Will it have to comply with the January 1st RSA or the current RSA?
It would have to comply with both.
So there's three things kind of for the...
Well, in fact, it would comply with the, really two, because the existing ordinance refers to current.
Yeah, okay.
So I think it's just those two. And there's not really a significant, the significance of the difference has to do with applications for a variant, a dimensional variance, an area variance, not a use variance. And given the limited number of Board of Adjustment meetings between first notice and the end, it's not really a major issue. So looking at Pages 6 and 7, Item 10-23320 on Page 6, which begins "in order to authorize the variance," that is essentially verbatim from the statute. And then the next paragraph, which begins "for purposes of Section 10-2 through 325," the definition of unnecessary hardship is again verbatim from the statute, except for the parenthetical phrase that is shaded at the end. And that was just because even though it's a new statute, I still find it confusing. So I thought it would be good to have an emphasis of what this actually means. Same thing at the top of Page 7. The unshaded part of that paragraph is the wording of the statute, and the shaded part is kind of basically restating it, just to make it a little bit clearer. 10-23340 is from the statute. And then 10-23350 and 10-23360, which are shaded paragraphs, are really explanatory. You know, one is, it's the intent, we're saying that the intent is to promote compliance with the new standards. Therefore, even if something is similar to what's around it, if it's out of compliance with the zoning, you shouldn't say that that's in the spirit of the ordinance. So that's just kind of just trying to explain that issue. And the same is in 23360, just emphasizing that things have to relate to special conditions of the property, which is what the statute says, but that keeps getting lost because that initial phrase keeps getting lost. So these shaded areas are meant to be helpful and explanatory and not to supersede or otherwise change what the statute says. Any questions about those? Yes.
I just wanted to point out, looks like there's 2, 233.60.
Mm-hmm.
Am I just missing something?
What?
It goes 60 and then 60 right below it.
You're right. Very good. Always good to have something easy to fix.
That'll be 70?
Yes, that would be 70. You're right. Thank you. No matter how many times we look at this. You can't get the numbers right.
Rick, I hate to pop the bubble, but if you look at your, this is probably easily fixed too, but if you look at your pages as done in your zoning ordinance table of contents, the pages here...
Don't match.
Match.
They're supposed to update automatically. They don't. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure it's easily fixed, but just note...
We'll just double-check. Thanks. Okay, the next one is on Pages 13 to 15, and this was something that was recommended again at a public hearing, and I think everybody felt that it was a good idea was to insert brief purpose statements, to say what the purpose of each district is. And I didn't try to distinguish among the different types of single residents or general residents or mixed residential. I think the general purpose is clear enough, and then the specifics have to do with the specifics of the district. So for example, in single residence, A, it's to provide areas for single-family dwellings at low to medium densities and appropriate accessory uses.
Counselor Dwyer, did you have a question? Yeah, I had hoped that the gateway, I mean, I think this is great to have this. I think it's helpful. I think the gateway, which is on Page 14, I'm not sure that captures really the spirit of how we got to the gateway, which was transit-oriented, mixed-use, affordable housing with density. And this really makes it sound like we want to have, you know, I certainly agree that we want the visual character to be attractive, but I really think the underlying purpose of this, and I wouldn't want people to miss that message, is different.
Is that something that, would we just accept it in a sort of a, refer to me and I'll make the appropriate change?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on any of these purpose statements?
I was just wondering on the MRO, MRB, whether you could slide in a reference to live-work as well?
Sorry.
Slide in a reference to the live-work unit or live, let me take a step back. I think the ArtSpeak people wanted to see a little bit more prominence of live-work, and I know that live-work is permitted in MRO, MRB, and I'm just wondering whether the purpose statement could include a reference to including live-work space or something like that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else on these purpose statements? Let's jump ahead to 20. Actually, this is, you almost don't need to do it, but I'll just go there. On Page 20, under, there's a shaded, two shaded rows, Historic Preservation Building and Museum. And in the previous draft, I had, under each one of those, I had with-function facilities as a subcategory and without-function facilities. And I never got around to really defining that. It was something that was kind of carried over. I was trying to simplify wording from the previous ordinance and wasn't being very successful. So what I did instead is I took that out of here and instead went to, if you hold your hand, or you just jump ahead to Page 107, the, there's a shaded area there, and we have in, under, basically what we're saying is that any zoning district, you can do certain things as accessory uses. And then in the mixed residential or business districts, you can also do these periodic events. And that was really what the existing ordinance said, but it was in the use table and was hard to capture in the use table. So I just did it in this way instead. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, back on Page 49, I redrew the graphic of the corner lot vision obstruction. And this is not regulatory, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't, the regulation is the paragraph above it, but I hope this makes it a little bit clearer what we're talking about.
It's a work of art.
Thank you.
It is really helpful, though.
What was that?
Cheese.
Pie.
It was a mouse, should be a mouse, a large mouse. Page 59, this was a struggle, but this is an illustration showing the relationship of all of those setbacks that we have between certain types of non-residential uses. In some cases, we say it's between the structure and a residential district. In some cases, we say it's between the use and the residential district. In some cases, we say it's between the lot and the residential district. And so this is trying to show the different ways that could happen, whether the, and the lower part is where the lot actually itself crosses into a residential district, which actually is the case with a number of automobile dealerships, which does also, I didn't highlight this because we discussed it, but in the table just above that illustration, you'll see that the sale, rental, leasing, distribution, repair of vehicles, et cetera, is 200 feet, is the distance between the use and the residential district. In a, and we discussed this two weeks ago in a previous meeting, on the fly, we had kind of changed that to 500 feet and made it between the lot and the residential district. And it was pointed out by a number of people that that made 12 out of 13 auto dealerships in the city non-conforming. So the intent was not to do that, and so we're back to the existing regulation here. Is that okay? Page 78 and 79, there was some confusion about historic appeals from the historic district commission's decisions. And so I either rewrote or added a number of provisions about that. The shaded area is the first shaded one on Page 78, Item 636.41, is really an expansion of the existing, the existing regulation rewriting it. The second shaded one is to clarify because there was a question about whether there was one 30-day period in which both the vote and the revised decision had to be made or two sequential 30-day periods. And it's, so I rewrote 43 and 44, which hopefully makes it clear that both things have to happen within the same 30-day period, which is what I believe the law is.
I just had a question. In 43, you use the term "application for rehearing shall be made."
Yes.
Does that mean the date that it's put in the mailbox, the date, I mean...
Interesting question. This actually is a quote from the state statute. And so I was trying, I was trying not to interpret. So the state statute says, I believe the state statute says, "an application for rehearing shall be made," and then later on, it says, "the filing of a motion." And those are both state regulations. So I believe that means you have to actually submit the application. That's the date at which you actually submit your motion for rehearing.
So is it preferable, preferable to stick with the language of the state statute in 43 or to make "made" be filed?
I could, if, I think it'd be fine to change it. I was just, I was trying not to mess with it, but if you think it's clear, I mean, I agree, it would be clearer. And that certainly makes it more specific, so I...
I think that clarification, I think adds to it, doesn't detract from it.
Okay, great. So, shall be filed. Okay, maybe we should even say, I mean, part of the problem is, in the state law, one, it says, one paragraph says "an application for rehearing" and the other one says "a filing of a motion for rehearing." I don't know that there's any difference between those. You know, it seems like we maybe use the same language for both, application in both cases. Okay. I'm fine with that.
Which are you using, motion?
Application for rehearing.
Then look at 42, because you probably, I mean, you just have to...
Yes, okay. We've got "application for rehearing" in 41, "motion," so we'll change 42 to "application for rehearing." We will be consistent.
Yeah. That's okay.
41 through .44. Okay. And then the, another change that's made here is in .43 on Page 78 and in .52 on Page 79, there have been changes in laws about, or I'm not sure if there's changes or clarifications, but basically this statement in the second sentence of each of those shaded paragraphs, it says, "The 30-day period shall begin on the day after the date of the commission's vote, excepted if the minutes of the meeting at which the vote was taken are not filed within five business days of the 30-day period." It's just something that's in state law. That is actually the state law, so I'm just reflecting that. Page 83, the airport approach overlay district has always been a challenge. And what I did in the shaded areas, I think I cut down several paragraphs that were much more complicated, that when you read them carefully, all said the same thing. And so, which is kind of repetitive. And so I think I cut this about in half in terms of the amount of wording and tried to make it clear. No change in the meaning of it, just being very clear about what is being allowed. And I always, you know, find that allowing a tree to grow is just such an interesting concept. You will not allow a tree to grow. Just, I couldn't find a better way to say it, but... We've already talked about 107. 146, I added a parking requirement for live-work units. I've seen a number of requirements, and some of them, some of them are quite restrictive, and I think that's not what we intend to do, but we want to make sure that whatever the size of the live-work unit is and however many employees there might be there, that we have enough parking to support the non-residential area. And the one space per 500 square feet is the number that we're proposing to use in the central business district for upper-floor space, and it seemed like an appropriate one to use for a live-work unit.
Counselor Dwyer?
This certainly is really inappropriate when I, it says two spaces plus one space per 500 square feet. And, you know, all the work that we've talked about in this community around live-work, I know this has to apply to variety, but has been for the affordable situation where typically an individual is trying not to have to also rent studio space but live in their space with, you know, a portion for writing or a portion for painting. So to require two space, effectively three spaces for those seems to me to essentially kill it. And...
Could we jump ahead to the definition of live-work? Because it may actually, that may interact with that. I know what you're saying, and I agree with it, but I was, let's jump ahead to Pages 212 and 213, because we may come back to this and say, we want to change that. So on the bottom of 212 and top of 213, there's this new definition for live-work units. And this is based on the definition for live-work unit that is in the building code. And it does raise some issues. One of the issues is, under the building code, a live-work unit shall not exceed 3,000 square feet of gross floor area. So that's one of the things. And then the second part is, the non-residential area shall, under the building code, it's between 10% and 50%. I'm suggesting there be 25% and 50% of the floor area. And the, so if you had a 3,000-square-foot live-work unit, of which 50% were non-residential, and on the next page, you had three non-residential people working there as part of that. See, that's, what we need to decide is what we mean by a live-work unit, because under the building code, under the building code, you can have five non-resident employees in a 3,000-square-foot live-work unit. So it could be somebody living there and having five employees coming to work, and maybe people are coming and buying things or delivering things. So that gets to your question about what we mean by affordable.
That's right. Well, or are there really two kinds of live-work units? Because I think the live-work unit that has been talked about in this community is not something where other people come in to work.
And that's, and we can certainly define our live-work unit more restrictively than the building code. We could say here that the live-work unit shall have no non-resident workers, and then we could take away the 500 square feet for non-residential workspace, if that's what the intent is. And that's an important discussion to have and a very appropriate one to have right now.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's been the thinking all along. Now, there may be this other kind of, I'm not imagining the other kind of unit where I live and work there and then other people come to work there. That's more like a office that I'm living in. But the other, the live-work that, you know, has been advocated for for a long time here and people have hoped for is really just the individual lives there and works there. It's not a workplace for others.
Yeah, I agree, I understand that. I think that the, we actually had somebody come and say they really liked the building code definition of live-work at one of our public hearings. And so I didn't want to get more restrictive than that. Somebody from ArtSpeak came and said they liked, they thought the building code was a good definition. So I was using that to try to be more restrictive, but we can be much more restrictive than that.
Do you want to call out two people? I'm assuming live-work would be a single person doing it or a husband and wife doing it.
Well, sure, yeah.
But I'm just saying, if it gets more than two, now I think you're talking non-residential.
Yeah.
So do we want to say no non, we can do that. I'm not sure what the intent of the board was.
It, you know, to me, it's not about how many people live there, it's about how many people work there.
Right.
So do we want to say no non-residential? Is that what we're trying to do here? No non-resident workers, no non-resident employees? Well, can you make it, can you have residential and then a non-residential piece?
Does it mess you up, Rick?
Yeah.
I've just changed the building code, whatever. I mean, you know, we'll just change what's going before the council in the code to make it sink. It doesn't matter to me. It's more of a planning issue. In fact, I came to Rick a couple of times and said, "These numbers, are they, you know, from a planning standpoint, is this something you want?" I don't, I'm not married to them. It's a planning issue. And I was kind of surprised that in the building code, they even got into that.
Yeah.
But not trying to create anything new.
Yeah, I think that's a good solution. Get rid of the employee part.
So we can, I change Item D on the definition to say there are no non-resident workers, something like no non-resident workers, or shall be...
How about if you took the word "plus" and substituted "and"?
What I would do in this, in the, going back to the parking table, we could just delete that line, one space per 500, just have two spaces.
Yeah, that's better.
What about if they do have non-residential?
But if we're saying in the definition that they don't have non-residential. I think the question is, well, the question that's being discussed, I think, is...
Is our definition of live-work?
Is our definition of live-work, because we want to have no non-resident workers there.
Okay, so if there's live-work space, it does have non-residential?
Then it wouldn't be allowed in our zoning.
Is resident and residential? There's no non...
I'm sorry, no non-resident employees, right. So live, it's a...
It gets confused, yeah, yeah.
So non-residential space, but no employees working there who don't live there.
Well, I mean, but, I mean, I, first of all, I think it's really hard as a zoning matter to regulate that, but don't you really care about parking only to the extent they have non-resident employees? So I might take the approach that it's plus a space for every, every permanent non-resident employee or something like that, as opposed to having the parking, which, and I realize this is a departure because your formulation for parking is based on space, which I think is much easier to enforce. But I'm concerned about saying that a live-work space can't have any non-resident employees. I mean, I'd be happy to leave it out, but then you run into something like the boarding house complaint, which is all of a sudden, I've got five cars in a single-family driveway, and that becomes problematic for other reasons. So I think there may, this may be one of those places where if you're going to regulate non-resident employees or at least refer to it, really that is the juncture where parking becomes important.
And, but I think also, I agree that that is where it becomes important. And, but the question, I guess, is, do we, do you want to, as a matter of policy, have these uses that have up, there are 3,000-square-foot uses and have up to three non-resident workers? I thought it would be appropriate because the districts we're allowing them in are either mixed residential or business districts. So I thought a larger use would be fine. And I don't see a problem with regulating it, but I'm not really sure. I think Counselor Dwyer, your concern sounds like it's we're letting things in that aren't what we're really targeting.
Well, it sounds like with the parking that we're making what we're hoping to have too onerous to ever have it. That would be my concern.
What if we, okay, go ahead.
Mr. Coviallo?
What if we don't start adding the space until over 1,000 square feet?
That's what I was going to say, yeah. Or if we said one parking space for, per 500 square feet over a certain amount of non-resident? So your first, your first 500 or 750 square feet are free. And then when you get over that, then you start adding parking spaces.
I think Mr. Hoplia.
Just questioning, Chris, what type of building do you envision these units to be in?
Well, look at the, look at the examples that have been turned down by the Board of Adjustment. You know, multi-floor building that has a variety of spaces in it of different sizes that are typically sized, though, for a couple or a single, you know, two people or a single...
So like maybe a conversion of a mill building?
Absolutely.
Picture the building on McDonough Street, in my mind, that two-story building, if you were to break it up into townhouse-type style?
Right.
But that also relates to letter C and the viability of whether letter C is, again, too restrictive for what we just described. You know, if I have a little balcony or a little second-floor space in a small thing where I go to write or paint, why do you care if I do that in a loft?
This, well, actually, this is, this is, this is a place where we... This, well, actually, this is, this is, this is a place where we would start running into conflict with the building code, I think. Because the building code, then we would be more permissive than the building code.
Well, and we can-
Can we do that?
Yeah, we can, because we're simply, yes, we can.
Okay.
Mr. Culker?
We can do anything.
I'm sort of confused. It seems to me that if you had, as Rick put it, you know, the first 500 feet is free, that's a 10 by 50 room. You can put two, three, four, five people in there putting widgets together, or building birdhouses, or whatever the live work space is used for. That the requirement for parking, it seems to me, is directly related to the people that you have in there. Live work, husband, wife, one, two people, fine, two spots. When you start putting employees in there, then that's where the impact for the parking has to be. So it seems to me this, the far simpler thing is simply no employees, period.
And default, okay.
But do we want to have live work, and for every employee, it's an X amount of space?
Wait a minute, wait, wait. I said no employees, period.
But then I think you're limiting what the live work space can be.
Yeah, a lot of people hire accountants to come in for a little while to do some work.
One, one difficulty with doing it on the basis of employees is that we are proposing, I believe, to make these permitted use, uses, and not special exceptions. They don't have to go to anybody for permission. And so it's very hard to monitor. It's eas, much easier to monitor square feet. Somebody comes to the building department, the inspections department, the planning department, and they, it's a site, site review, easy site review issue. You've got this many square feet, this turns to a certain parking requirement. But if somebody comes in and, and you don't know how many employees they have, then it becomes much more, much more difficult to monitor, as opposed to an issue under the special exception criteria.
Having said that, the best in code enforcement officers are the neighbors. Because if they see people trooping in and out of this place all day long, you know, then they're going to say, I think they have five employees, or four employees, or something.
My, my point was that it's, it's easy to do a no employee requirement. It's easy to do a parking based on square footage requirement. It's harder to do a parking based on employee requirement.
Which is why I said no employees is very simple, it makes it easy.
Well, if it's live work space and it's 500 square feet, I'm assuming some of that space needs to be a kitchen? But live, if you're going to live there, you're going to need a kitchen, you're going to need a bedroom. So I would think 500 or 1,000 square feet, wouldn't have that big of an area to, quote, work in.
But this says one space per 500 square feet of non-residential area.
So this would be-
That statement is kept in there.
This would, this would, this would be-
That's a 10 by 50 room. Pretty good-sized room.
Ms. Hayden?
Maybe, maybe, instead of trying to imagine what might happen in the future, maybe we should try it with no employees, because I think the real intent was the individual or the couple that is trying to live an art life and make a living, and see how it works. And a year from now, if we say, geez, we've got all these applications that came in that weren't allowed because they had employees, because what we don't want to have is the old unintended consequences of have this building, and somebody says, aha, I can stuff a whole bunch of worker bees in here, and all I have to do is have a cot in the corner, and-
Right.
We don't want that. But I would suggest we try it with no employees and no parking requirements other than the two spaces. See how it goes. It's new.
I think general consensus is, okay, I think we have our answer.
Okay, I'll do that. That's good.
And little letter C, then? Goes away, right?
May, maybe speaking to that, I, I think the intent here is, is more focusing on the safety end of things, and how much of the non-residential activity is going to be spread about the building. Whereas if you're trying to sort of segregate, if you will, or limit where the non-residential, in theory, higher hazard is, we could probably, though, maybe do some exclusion for like mezzanines or something like this. See, I don't think it's intended for the business office element.
No.
It's, it really isn't, it's-
And isn't, isn't the requirement here, under the code, in order to qualify under the code as a live work unit, you'd actually have to delineate what the area was, this is a non-residential area.
Right.
So, you know, you wouldn't delineate the balcony of your apartment area as, as a non-residential area. That would be, you might choose to work there, as if you, as almost, it's the same way you would be in an avocation, but, but if you're, the places where you're actually storing your paints and your glues and, and your tools would be delineated as, as your non-residential area.
And we want that on the first level.
It would have to be, it should be on the first, yeah.
For public safety reasons.
Right, right.
Level?
Well-
Of building or unit?
Of unit, sorry.
Okay, so-
That should be arbitrary.
The first or main floor of the live work unit.
Unit.
Hmm, yes.
So I could be on the fifth floor and have a two-story thing, and you're talking about-
Yes.
Whatever you consider the main floor.
Of the unit.
Of the unit, yeah. Is that more clear now?
Yeah.
Okay. Then if we can jump back to 204, which is fun, the definition of family.
Ready, Adam?
And this came about partly because of the concerns that were raised about overcrowding, I think, in the Islington Street area. I'm not sure we've pinned it down as, we're, we're not trying to be overly restrictive, we're trying to be fairly inclusive. But we're trying to make sure that, I guess the first thing is that, you know, you're saying it's people living, living together as a single housekeeping unit, you know, sharing common living, sleeping, cooking, and eating facilities. If it's an individual, or two or more individuals who are related in some way, or two or three individuals not related, and any of their dependents that are related to them. So it's, it's trying to be, you know, where, where before it said, no family, no family where not everybody is related can contain more than five persons. So under the, under the existing definition, you could have five unrelated persons, or you could have four related persons, and only one other person who wasn't related to them. It gets, it's kind of, it's not really what you're trying to get at. I think this one is a little bit more flexible, and also gets away from that five unrelated person piece.
Counselor Dwyer.
You know, I agree. The one thing I would suggest is, I'm not sure that the dependents need to be related by those cases. I could see a case where people have children who, or younger people living with them for different reasons, and there may be no formal guardianship or relationship, but they may be caring for them. And I don't know if we want to exclude that. I know that's not your intention to exclude that. I guess it sort of depends how formal the word guardianship is taken there.
And also whether you want these people to be dependents, or, I mean, you could be, you could be caring for somebody without them being your gar, your dependent, I suppose.
Well, exactly. You know, I'm thinking of a staff member I have who just happened, doesn't live in this community, but has taken in some children who were abandoned. There's no formal guardian, guardianship right now, but there's no relationship.
The city's not going to be going out looking-
No, but we just want to be clear.
I'm not really sure, I, I understand, I'm not really sure how I can, how to fix it, how to fix, how to fix the wording.
Change to-
Where did this definition come from?
We worked on it, this, there are, I worked, went to many, many communities and looked at, I mean, there are definitions that go on for a page and a half. And there are very simple definitions. The definitions that have been, you know, most recently validated by the courts go on for a page and a half.
So if this became an issue, such as in Chris's case, I'm assuming that you could bring that to light?
Yeah.
Guardianship.
Yeah, we could address it. Right, I mean-
This is just a very sensitive issue, so it might be good to-
And I think you need five pages to cover everything, and you'll still need another four.
I, I'll, I'll second that, because I've looked at some of that. It, it, you get so tortured in these definitions, it might be appropriate to take the Sydney, Cindy Hayden approach.
Let's try it.
Yeah, but for the record, I think we can state here, this is a public record, that we're not trying to exclude, we're, we're just trying to be succinct.
Yes. Okay.
Ms. Hayden?
I think, Rick, just an editorial thing, an individual living alone or any of the following groups?
Yes, right, yep.
And is common law still a term? People that have been living together for a bazillion years, but never got married, or anything else?
It's not recognized as a legal marriage, but it counts.
But they would, would they not be covered under B?
They would be.
Yeah, roommates.
They're not related, and any of their dependents.
Okay, gotcha, all right. Yep.
Okay. Oh, that's my, that's my list. So. Are there other issues? And Tony had, Tony did bring up one.
Page 18.
Yes, this is one under 1.43, more than eight dwelling units. If you recall, I, a couple of weeks ago, I came and said, oops, we had inadvertently made multifamily uses, prohibited uses in the CBA, CBB, and B districts, and we hadn't meant to do that. And I presented this, this breakdown to you, and we just didn't discuss it. And so Tony has brought it up, and a number of other people have brought it up to me, that I had put down a special exception for more than eight dwelling units, and, you know, permitted for anything below that. And that is, right now, they are permitted uses. So there's no, there's no, I guess the only concern that I had in, in that was that since residential uses have been a concern, some of the, a couple of recent proposals in terms of how they impact particularly parking, I think. I, we put them in a special exception, but we've kind of addressed that in the parking regulations. So if, I have no problem with making those Ps, if that's what everybody would prefer.
General consensus, yes?
Okay. Okay. Other issues?
I have an issue when we get to the map, but I'll bring it up.
Yeah.
Any other issues on zoning ordinance?
No. Okay. Then we can, for now, turn to the zoning map. So on the zoning map, I listed the major changes that are on the map. There's one that I missed, that just caught, and Cindy just caught. To add to those bullet lists, the changes in the historic district boundaries, we've done. Lefty, lefty. It's a Steve color. I think the consensus is that the color we've chosen for the Gateway District is very nice.
Very soothing.
So the first item is, the first bullet is the Gateway District on Lafayette Road. And it is, there's still a small typo there. On the, if you'll notice, at the corner of Elwin Road, a section is colored as Gateway, but still labeled MRB. The intent was to turn the, the intent, the intent could be either way. We've gone, we've gone both ways on this. This particular district was, is an existing MRB, and we had suggested it could be Gateway. There's some other MRBs, another MRB further down the road that we left as MRB. And I suppose we could go either way on that. Our intention was really to make them both, make all of the, all of the things that were, in some way, business along that corridor into Gateway. The other changes that we made, which you can't, so, so thinking of this right now, if you see, if you're looking at the Gateway, all of those areas that are red are either existing, general business, existing office research, or existing mixed residential business, with the following exceptions. At the, on Constitution Avenue, on, there are three lots on the south side of Constitution Avenue. They begin with the municipal district, and then, so then there are three lots to the right of that. Those are lots that are existing industrial zone. But what's there right now is like a mini plaza with some commercial uses and a mini storage warehouse use. So they're not really industrial uses, and they face South Gate Plaza, or the back of South Gate Plaza. So it seems to make, and since it's surrounded essentially on all sides by either Gateway or the municipal district, it seems to make sense to include those in the Gateway District, rather than have that island of, of industrial there. I, I would point out that we, we have talked in the past about perhaps including the large industrial site that wraps around South Gate, which is the back of the Water Country parcel in the Gateway. But we, we didn't want to split up a district at this point, so we thought we'd leave that, not touch that at this point. So, so that, those three lots are existing industrial. And then the other area is down at the Rye Town Line, starting at the Town Line and going up across the first few lots on Coach Road, and then over past the Wren's Nest, which is where this kind of, there are a couple of black lines in that area, if you see on the map. Those are artifacts of, of different, us trying to put different layers together, and they'll disappear. They don't really mean, there are probably slivers on the zoning map that didn't get, didn't get changed appropriately. So those are areas that are industrial right now, primarily industrial. There's one SRB site, I think the Wren's Nest site is SRB. And those would also be proposed for Gateway. Any questions about the Gateway District? The second major set of changes is on Islington Street. And it is the extension of, sorry, Ms. Hayden.
So before we leave that, though, the MRB parcel that's up by Elwin, is, is the board's desire to have that be Gateway, then?
Or, yeah, well, I guess there's sort of two parts to that question. There's that one, and then there's the MRB down below, which is next to, at Naval Haven, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, actually, that's one thing I should have mentioned, too. The, I didn't mention that, thank you for saying that. We've also included in this rezoning of the old fire station from Municipal to Gateway, because that's going to be available in the future. Yeah, next to the fire station is that other one. I, I don't really have a strong position, you know, a good reason either way to include in the MRBs in Gateway or not, but that's, that would be a question.
Mr. Covial?
I would think that we'd go with Gateway, because that would push the building further away from the residences. And there also seem to be two kind of entryways to the neighborhoods, which would make it more friendly, welcoming, I guess.
I think the one by Elwin makes sense to be Gateway.
There's also one in Hoover, actually, which I didn't, didn't actually look at.
That's the Animal Hospital, right?
Yes.
It's such a small lot, I don't know what you could do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm inclined to leave it.
So let's, let's, just make the changes as they are in the map, and just change, just get rid of the word MRB on that. Okay, on-
Wait, I'm sorry, just, just to bring it all home. So the mobile station is going to be Gateway. The animal hospital's going to be MRB. And then moving down, the MRBs on either side of the new municipal fire station are going to be Gateway now?
It'll be, I think, MRB.
Oh, they're going to stay MRB?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Because they're right up against that dense neighborhood, yeah. On Islington Street, what we, if you recall, we've pulled the central business B district back up to Parker Street. Right now, you can see the line next to the park, cutting through the word Islington on Islington Street. That's where the current boundary of the central business B district extends down to, extends down to the park. And we're proposing to pull that back up to Parker Street, which is the, as you all know, the southerly side of the Fiennes property. And, and so that, what that does is, it's, it's a little bit, you know, this scale's a little bit difficult to do, but we, to see, but we've basically, there, the large parcel, looking at the word State Street, the parcel that the E is within, in State, that is the Fairpoint parcel, and it cuts through from Islington to State. So that is the only area where we're proposing to cut a parcel with a zoning district line. We actually talked about this at one of our meetings about the-
We discussed that.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we're doing. And then the, the, the small parcels to the right of that, would, you know, that are under the word S, under the T in State and Street, the three parcels to the left of that are- Hmm. I'm having difficulty seeing this now. I'm wrong about that. I'm sorry, I'm wrong, I'm wrong about, this actually is...
Yeah, the, the.
The long parcel is the parcel that is to right, is the first, we did not do what we, we intended to do here, actually. This should, the line should go one, one more line over. If you, if you look at.
Toward downtown.
Toward downtown, where those light parcel, where the word State Street is, continue over, and that long parcel just, in the dark area, is the Fairpoint one. That's the one that should be divided. And in fact.
What's, what's the one to the, oh, the, the middle high school is.
Is Central Business B.
It's CBB.
CBB. And.
Municipal is a lot of the.
We actually, this is not the final, this is not the final draft. Oh, dear. If you could take the line, this is a little bit of a problem. If you take the line that divides, that's above State Street, and draw it across, cut across that line, and cut up to the, those other lots up toward the end of the M District. You can see there's, there are four or five very small lots on State Street that are, that are in the CBB District. Does anybody, do people understand what I'm saying here?
Yeah, you're just going to extend that.
Extend that line over. The intent was to make those lot, those small lots, make, make them MRO. You see how the MRO is on the south side of State Street? We, the intent was to bring MRO across the top, so that, and to have the, the back part of the Fairpoint, Fairpoint lot be MRO also. Unfortunately, that didn't show, it's hard, it's hard to explain.
No, that makes sense.
So, so basically, the lots, what we would do is have the lots on both, right now, the lots on one side of State Street are MRO, and on the other side, they're CBB. And the intent would be to have the lots that face State Street on both sides of the street be MRO.
But the parking lot of the.
And the parking lot of Fairpoint would also be MRO. So it would be, it's, I'm sorry that, I apologize for this. I didn't realize. Yeah, so we should have pulled, we should have pulled the MRB up one lot further and had everything behind that on the State Street be MR, be, be MRO. Would anybody like me to come over and point what I'm saying on their map, as I, you understand?
Take your word for it.
No, it makes sense.
Okay, yeah.
Just go over there and point it out.
Are you, are you going to move on to the next one?
I was going to move on, yes, but go ahead.
I'm not suggesting we change what you just said, but sometimes people ask, you know, what kind of impact this has, and I, I learned something recently that was really interesting. Again, I'm not asking to change this. The Old Port Traders property, because of this change, we're taking a property that is probably now valued at like one and a half million dollars, and with the height reduction of this, it's going to go down to about seven hundred thousand dollars. There's a huge impact in that. Just for, food for thought.
Put your mic up, Tony.
There we go. Sorry. Just, we, we talk about impacts and things in zoning changes a lot, and one of the things that I learned recently was by changing the zoning along this corridor, which I'm in favor of, the, an example property would be the Old Port Traders property. Right now, with the height availability of sixty feet, that property is probably valued about one and a half million, and reducing it down to forty would reduce it down to about seven hundred thousand. We're, we're causing an impact, so.
Ms. Coker?
I'm curious, where did that information come from?
The realtor of the property. The numbers may not be accurate, but, but certainly, we're reducing the height.
Sure.
And.
I thi, I think that, I think the more important than reducing the height, there is, the, the, the more, the much more important impact that we're having is taking away the ability for them to build, to expand the development with no parking. That's, that's going to be, the height, I don't think the height's going to have any impact. I think it's the parking that's going to have the impact. Because if you look at the, for example, the Klein's property, the, you know, they, I don't think they built to the full height that was allowed. They, I don't think that even with their, with their large proposal with both sets of buildings, they built to the full height that was allowed, but they just built, it was, it was the parking that was the big issue, I think. And I think that's what, I think what we're doing by taking them out of Central Business B, which I think was the intent, was to take away that ability to, to expand, to do a Klein's type development with no parking.
And I don't even think the realtor was complaining, oddly enough. I think he was just saying, you know, just be aware of impacts of like this you're having. I thought it was useful information.
No, it is. Anything else on Islington Street? On, on the Osprey Landing area, right now, on the zoning, on the existing zoning map, the area that is, that extends between Portsmouth Boulevard, all the way across Sharewater, and all the way over to the, the NRP District, that area is all shown as the OR slash MV District, Office Research slash Mariners Village. And if you recall, there's, we have this very complicated overlay district, which has, has an underlying district that is not used at all. And then the overlay district separates the, the, in, area within its boundaries into three components, a, a single-family component, an apartment component, and an office research component. And that was all to implement the court settlement relating to the bankruptcy and so forth of that area. And the development has essentially taken place, and so what is being proposed is to rezone the Office Research component to Office Research, to rezone the Single Family Component to GRB, and to rezone the Apartment Component to Garden Apartment, Mobile Home, and then to have only a small overlay district, which is the area that is hatched on here, as the Osprey Landing overlay. And that district is only there for the affordable housing and tenure, apartment tenure, rental housing requirements that exist for forty years from the date of the settlement. So, so it's really to simplify, to show on the map actually what is allowed there, and to get rid of all of the confusion between having an overlay district that refers to other districts. Any questions about that? Okay. Another section, which is not really as substantive, but it's, it's important to recognize, is that P's, our zoning districts did not align with the development, P's Development Authorities' districts in many cases. There were places where our districts approximated theirs, particularly in the sweep of Corporate Drive, where the southern, the southern curve of Corporate Drive there, as it wraps around our district, didn't closely follow the, the, the P's Development Authorities' districts. And then the Airport District, the southern end of the Airport District, where it crosses over Grafton Drive, that was also not in accordance with there. And there were some other places where there were little adjustments. I think there were, there's another place at the corner of Exeter and Manchester Square, that, of the northern part. And we were able to get from P's a GIS layer showing their, their actual locations of their zoning districts. So we've just imported it in, and we've adjusted our zoning boundaries to match theirs. And that, so it's, it's really just trying to be consistent with them. And then the final change, which is not mentioned on this, is the, are the important changes to the Historic District, which we talked quite a bit about. And they are, on the lower right part of the map, a inset, and they are, they include the extension down Islington Street to Jewel Court, the extension down Lafayette Road to South Street, and the, the filling in of the little donut hole on Hanover Street between Maplewood and Fleet Street, and the adjustment of the lot lines along Middle Street, a lot, the boundary along Middle Street, to follow lot lines rather than to follow a, a constant distance back from Middle Street. These are all things we discussed a couple of times. Mr. Hopper?
Rick, did we discuss that the strip coming down Lafayette Road would jump across South Street?
That was on the map, I believe. Maybe not. If, if not, then I, we can take it out.
I don't, I don't remember.
You don't think so?
No.
Okay, we can, we can.
Well, it ended at South Street, I'm really pretty sure.
Okay, I, I know that on some maps from the, from the Historic District Commission, it went there, but maybe that was not the one that we looked at.
No. Yeah, it's a single lot, it's a big house, but it's, anyway.
Mr. Coker?
For the record, since this is a public session, and it is open, can you please, and I turned to Rick for this, can you tell why that the Historic District is being expanded? What is the logic and the reasoning behind it?
Well, I, I, aside from the fact that Historic District Commission has looked at this, did a look at all of the, a number of areas, and had priorities of which ones they wanted to include, I think the, the reason is that they want to protect what they feel are the important entryways to the, to the Historic Core. I mean, that's their, their focus in these, in these areas, is looking at the, the corridors coming in. Why they recommended the corridor, for example, along Lafayette Road and not the one along Middle Road, I couldn't tell you, but that, those, that's been the result.
But suffice to say, and it would be accurate to say, that this is a request by the HDC?
Yes.
Okay. A. B, since property owners will be subject to, to different rules for working on their homes and making changes and modifications and the like, procedurally, how will these homeowners be notified that they are, they are subject to, other than, again, just other than a public hearing, notice of public hearing, anything, is there any plan to notify these homeowners and property owners that, that they are going to be possibly subjected to a different set of rules, in other words, the HDC rules, versus just a normal public notice of a meeting and that sort of thing?
Ms. Hayden?
You know, I think, I know what you're saying, Don, but I think if we were to do that, we'd have to send mailings to every individual in the city, because everybody's affected differently by this zoning ordinance, whether it's changing from the Central Business District, whether it's changing the MRO, whether it's changing the Gateway, the conditional use permit for wetlands. I mean, everybody, or many, properties are going to be differently affected. So when they will find out is when they go to do something, and they come to the planning and inspections counters, and just like normal, when any homeowner comes in, they say, I want to do this, what rules do I have to follow? Staff tells them what applies.
Point's well taken.
Thank you, Cindy. Council Dwyer?
The, the three properties, I guess it's four, that we were talking about before that are left out along State Street, up, it's, that's like a little square donut hole. Is there a reason for that? I mean, it seems.
The only, I think the only reason for that is that they, that the, the Middle Street, we, we looked at those properties, and those properties were divided by the line that was a certain distance from Middle Street. And we unders, our interpretation was that the, that the commission was interested in getting properties that funded on Middle Street. I think it, the way it is right now, the, probably two, two of the properties, probably three of the properties, actually, the structures would be affected by the Historic District regulations, and the fourth one.
Already, existing.
Existing.
Yeah, currently.
And the, and the fourth one might not be, because the boundary only crosses a corner of it. I have no, I don't think it would be contrary to the intent of what we're doing to, to, to make, our choice was to take them all out or put them all in.
Yeah, got it.
And I, and I don't think it would be contrary to what the Historic District Commission was trying to do, to put them all in rather than take them all out.
Or you could just follow the MRO line. Right? Because the MRO line's cutting across that property.
Well, it's, what I'm saying, no, it's not the big one, it's, it's the four that are between there, and those are.
I know, but it looks strange because of that big one. If the big one was, was cut in half, it wouldn't look so bizarre.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah.
I don't care which way we go.
If I'm reading this right, we're protecting a parking lot, but not the homes beside it.
Because it's part of the same lot.
Yeah, that's my. To me, it makes sense to, to fill it in. I think they were already under that existing ordinance, so.
Yep.
Fill them all in.
Right, that's my thought.
That makes sense.
He's breathing deeply over here.
Any, anything else? Anything else on the HD, HDC?
HD.
Or any other aspect of the zoning map, too?
Yeah.
No, all right. We have a few minutes of rustling time now. Okay. Now, now we have the.
City ordinances?
The city ordinances. And the one that is titled, Proposed Amendment to Ordinance is Relating to Referrals to the Planning Board. In, in Article fourteen of the current ordinance, there are a couple pages on, on things that have to be referred to the planning board before action is taken. And it's very extensive, and it actually does not conform to our practice, to the city's practice. I mean, it basically says that any study of, any projection of traffic or sewer use or anything like that needs to be referred to the planning board. And you can imagine that your agendas might be a little bit longer if we, at the end of each agenda, we, we gave you every study that had to do with a parking proj, parking analysis, or a traffic analysis, or a population projection. And many times, these are done for, for a variety of purposes that, that we may not even use permanently. It's just something that's, that it has to be done for some other type of, you know, for a, for a construction project, or a grant application, or something like that. And then there are many things that we, we would, we would not necessarily want to bring to you. I think it, it even talks about any use of city-owned buildings, which really goes beyond. What we're really concerned about, I think, is the planning board, is, it has to do with those things that are, that affect the, kind of the general use of land, and the acquisition of property, and disposition of property, and the layout of streets, and the disposition of streets. And also, you have here on the first page of this handout, the existing city ordinance, which is one long sentence. And I just like the idea that you would be given, you'd have to look at the final disposition of all solid wastes, as may be incurred, incurred by the community. I mean, this goes a little beyond, I think, what maybe you want to have as the planning board. So on the second page, the second page is what is meant both, both to replace the existing ordinances on the first page, so see, the existing non-zoning ordinance and the city ordinances on the first page, and to basically take the place of what we have in Article fourteen of the existing zoning ordinance. And I think this cuts it down to what really are the key issues we want to be looking at, our acquisition and disposition of real property, and plans for construction alteration, relocation, or discontinuance of a public way. Those are really the key planning issues that I think you should be, have referred to you as, before the council takes action on them. Makes sense. Any questions on this?
I just had a question about the proposed to-be-inserted language under eleven six oh two A two. Could it be possible, or would it be needed to include the word acceptance of a public way? Could it be possible that a road could be privately constructed and then, in the manner of accepting it?
Good, very good.
And then just to be clear, in that same, in B, sorry, under eleven six oh two, is it sixty days have elapsed since the referral? It's, it's probably pretty clear, I guess, as it is, but.
Yeah, okay.
Just to be clearer.
Yep. Great.
Where would sign referral fall, and is, is that use of public?
Yes.
Streets?
It's a license, it's a license for use of public way. It's under one, acquisition or disposition of municipal property, including licenses.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? And the next one is very simple. Basically, right, the state law authorizes site plan review, authorizes communities to allow site plan review for multifamily units, which is, which is described as multifamily dwellings containing three or more dwelling units. And the city set its threshold at five, but many of the properties that, that seem to create issues are maybe conversions to, from three to four. create issues are maybe conversions to, from three to four, four to five, you know, two to three, three to four, that kind of thing, one to, one to three. So that, so that it was recommended, and in your, in the site review regulations that you, we finalized back in April of 2008, we actually inserted three, three or more units, and we knew at that time that that would require an ordinance change. So part of this is just to change the number five, to change the number three. And then the other part is just to simplify the ordinance. It, it seems to be almost a drafting error, in the sense that it's, part of the existing ordinance is to tell the city clerk to file this ordinance that we've adopted. So just taking out that last sentence that says, it is further ordained that upon final passage, the city clerk is directed to file. So basically simplifying it, and just leaving the set, the, the first two sentences in, but to say, change five to three. Okay, that concludes.
That's all the items on the agenda. Any...
Sorry. Oh, yeah. Well, yes, I suppose we should address that last, that last, before you get to a vote, I guess. We do have this memo that I, I drafted, just kind of listing what I thought were some of the, the key areas that we should move ahead with. I, I guess I will just read it, because you haven't had a chance to, to think about it, and I do think it's important to, to recognize your work. So, "The revised zoning ordinance and site plan review regulations are the culmination of three years of effort and dozens of work sessions, meetings, and public hearings. The planning board has put a tremendous amount of time and effort into this project, particularly over the last several months, and I know that you're all relieved to be at the point of recommending the revised ordinance to the city council for adoption. This is truly a major milestone that deserves recognition. As we have discussed previously, this comprehensive revision of the city's two primary land use regulatory documents is also the first step in an ongoing process. Over the past months, a number of issues have, have been identified that we were simply unable to address in the draft revised zoning ordinance, and we've stated our intention to go back to work on these issues once the major revisions have been adopted. The following is a list of what I believe to be the priority land use regulatory issues that should be addressed in the coming year. I welcome your suggestions for changes or additions to this list. Number one, to review neighborhood development patterns in areas with large concentrations of non-conforming lots, and propose neighborhood-specific dimensional and intensity standards, lot area yards, building coverage, et cetera." And these are the areas that we, I think you've seen, I've shown you maps before. Obviously, the south end, Panaway Manor, Elwin Park, Maple Haven, there are a number of areas around the city where there are concentrations of, of lots that are substandard according to our zoning, and therefore require people to go to the Board of Adjustment for very minor changes. And, and we should probably look at those areas and see if we can resolve some of those things. Second thing, which is really related to this, and is, has also been a discussion of a couple of planning board meetings, to review the zoning regulations at Atlantic Heights, and propose revised dimensional standards, as well as the possibility of a new historic district. Three, to continue review of the potential rezoning of the areas currently zoned industrial and office research between the Route 1 bypass and Bartlett Street. Four, to review and update performance standards, noise, odor, vibration, et cetera, in both the zoning and non-zoning, zoning ordinance. We've taken some of the things in the existing ordinance out, and we've noted that there are overlapping standards in the, in the existing non-zoning ordinance. I think we need to go back to that and just continue that review. Consider design standards for development outside the historic district, and I think this is particularly the case in, in some of the commercial areas. Continue review of the parking standards and provisions in the Central Business District. We've had that discussion a couple times. And then the other things are somewhat internal, they're not really so much zoning ordinance-related, but they have impacts. One is to update the application fee structures for all land use boards. We found some, some areas where application fees were, seem to be very excessive for fairly minor things, and it just has to do with a very broad language in, in the, the fees ordinances. And then continue, consider changes in the permit process to clarify the relationship between land use permits and building permits. We, there's some times where it gets, gets confusing as which way we go, and, and I think we can simplify things quite a bit. So these are the, the key things I think we should probably move ahead with. I don't know whether any of you have thoughts at this point for other things we should move on, or, or we can obviously keep this as an ongoing list for something to checklist of things to, to look at.
Mr. Rice?
Yes, we talked last week about possibility of writing new philosophical language, so to speak, for the historic district. So I put that on our to-do list.
Philosophical language.
Well, talking about...
Oh, the sense of place.
Sense of place.
You know, I, I actually didn't mention that. I actually did include some of that in there, but I thought they were minor, I, I tried to do some minor tweaks, so I, I included the word sense, the phrase sense of place a couple of times, but I think that's good, a good point. And it's something we probably should go back to the Historic District Commission with, and just kind of go back, cycle back to them, once this is done. And, and just for your information, Peter Brits and I met with the Historic District Commission last night to talk about the relationship between historic district design and sustainability, and, and things like solar panels, and photovoltaics, and that kind of thing. Paige was there and participated in that. It was a, it was an interesting discussion. I'm not sure we made a lot of progress, but it was a, it was, it was interesting. I think that we should probably be looking at some of those purpose statements, go back and look at that again.
I'm assuming this will be a list that, that we'll, that we'll add to, that...
Evolve, yeah.
If the council or other people have, that this will be kind of our, our placeholder, if you will?
Yes.
Okay.
A work, a work program.
That what we have here is 95%, 98% inclusive, but there are things that we'll continue to work on.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's important, that... Council Dwyer?
Well, along those same lines, the potential for looking at gateway, I mean, I know number three, number three might be a part of it, but I think we have talked about and heard the potential for looking at the extension of gateway to other corridors.
Any other comments or questions?
Ready for a motion?
I think we are ready for a motion.
Recognize me, or send to you?
I, I'll, I'll let you go ahead and make the motion, but the, let me just, let me just say one thing, though, is when you make your motion, I think it might be helpful to call out the individual items. It's not just the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance, the zoning map, and the changes to Chapter 11, Articles Six and Eight, and that, that the motion should reflect that it is to include the revisions made by the board tonight, and any housekeeping editorial issues that staff finds as they're cleaning this up for its final debut at the council.
That sounds to me like a motion.
I think Tony, Tony got the gist of it.
Mr. Coviallo, would you like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, it is with my great pleasure, I make a motion to approve, recommend approval to the city council, the draft zoning ordinance dated October 8, 2009, with the revisions made tonight. The revised zoning map, I think it's draft of the same date, October 8, 2009. The Article Six, with, with revisions made tonight on the map as well. Article Six, Section 11. Article Eight, Section 11 as well.
There were revisions in, in...
The editorial.
There were editorial, there were revisions in Article, Check 11.
With revisions in both, I said Articles.
And, and any housekeeping editorial issues, just that the staff is repaged numbering them all.
Editorial, any housekeeping editorial, minor issues that staff identifies during the, the final printing, before the final printing.
Second. Second. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Coker?
In case you didn't notice, I'm not a big fan of the HDC. And I, I guess I need to express my displeasure at the expansion of the HDC, but unfortunately, I, I will be supporting Tony's motion, but I, I just, I wish there were some way that I could vote for everything but that. I just, I just really do not believe that, that the HDC should have the purview over these properties. I understand that, you know, they've done good things in the city and all of that, but I think the expansion of this is, is just a step too far. So, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? I'll call the vote. All who's in favor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Coker.
I just, I would feel out of place if I didn't thank the staff, Lucy Tillman and Dave Holden, for the work done today. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry.
I'll now call the vote. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Any polls in the chair will tie. Before we call for adjournment, I would like to thank every board member here. I think it was about 50 meetings that we attended. It was about 120 hours, which is three solid weeks, or 40 hours a week. Lot of heavy lifting. It, it's, it's, we had a lot of meetings and a lot of third Thursdays. So, I'd like to thank the planning staff, Rick Tainer, Jane, Lucy, David. I, I just, it's been an amazing process. And even tonight, when you think it's all done, other pertinent points come out, so I didn't see anybody asleep at the wheel. So again, thank you planning department, thank you planning staff, and with that, we have... Ms. Hayden?
Just one quick note before we adjourn, which is the next steps from here, just so the board is clear, we'll be sending this on to the city council for the October 19th meeting, where we will be asking them to schedule first reading for November 16th. And we will, of course, keep the board apprised of the, the schedule that the city council sets, but you'll see it next, the city council meeting on October 19th, just as they do with all their ordinances, an initial rollout before they actually schedule first reading.
Mr. Coker?
Procedurally, so I understand, the first reading is merely a formality to sort of declare its existence. There's no public debate, there's no public hearing.
Public hearings at second reading.
Second reading is the real, okay. Thank you.
So, I mean, there are at first reading, councillors may well raise issues that the public doesn't, but councillors raise issues sometimes that bring forth amendments on other kinds of...
But there's no public input at that first reading?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we call for adjournment? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.